Considered distracting.
Okay, call this meeting to order. Let's all stand for a moment of silence, please. Well, that's Councilman Pettit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor of the town?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Shiro?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd make a recommendation. We make an addition, make a closed session for the hiring appointment of a public appointee, officer, employee at the end of the agenda. I make a motion to do that.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
All right, do I have a volunteer to do the consent agenda?
Of course. I move to approve the filing consent agenda, the minutes of the regular council meeting on November the 10th, 2021, the minutes of the work session, November 16th, 2021, the financial reports ending November 30th, 2021, the 2022 town holiday and council meeting schedule, and the council payable totaling
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, any general citizen comments? No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone here want to speak? Steve, have we got any emails, letters?
No, sir.
All right, well, move along then. Presentations, Luray Downtown Initiative. Ms. Elliott, nice to have you as always, Jackie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's always good to be here. Don't have a whole lot to talk to you about. The December 3 Christmas tree lighting was a success. I want to give out special thank yous to you, Mr. Mayor, and to you, Vice Mayor, Shiro, for coming and lighting the tree for us. Baby Moons for doing the hot chocolate. That was a big hit with everyone. The Luray High School Choir performed, which was very nice, and we had a lot of really positive compliments about that. And I was very pleasantly surprised, as you probably were too, Councilwoman Pettit, with the turnout. We were expecting, you know, what, 50 to 75 people, and I think it was closer to 200, probably, somewhere in that ballpark. Shop Late was this past Friday, December the 10th. Spoke with our merchants on Saturday morning. I went downtown to visit. Very successful. Our merchants are happy. I know we had that conversation, Councilwoman Lillard. Folks aren't real keen on giving you percentages or their numbers, but in asking, everyone is telling me business is up and that business is good. So that's a very positive thing. And at 11:00 a.m., I saw merchants that had lines at their cash registers. And that's pretty awesome to see that downtown. And we've got some exciting things that are going to be coming that I'll be able to discuss with you publicly in January. So other than that, that's about it. And I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and thank you all for putting up with me all this year and helping me get through this first year. I'm almost there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks.
Very well planned and organized. It went well, as did the event at the chamber. I thought it was just a wonderful evening. It went really well.
Good. Yeah, I thought it went well, too. I was very happy.
All right, public hearings. All right, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Tonight, Council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and consider a request from Baker Development LLC to subdivide and rezone a parcel 42-9-1-7 and 7A from Business B1 to Planned Neighborhood Development, PND, and to reincorporate Lot 7A into the Planned Luray Landing Planned Neighborhood Development. Lots, a parcel seven, will remain zoned business.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Again, no one has signed up to speak. Anyone here want to speak in the public hearing? Again, Steve, no emails?
We had one email from a gentleman who came in to talk today. He was concerned about stormwater, but when he realized that the request was not associated with the stormwater, but simply the lot, he indicated that he had no concern.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, would you like to say anything? Thank you. All right, Council, any questions? Any discussion?
We've discussed it quite a bit. Do you want a motion?
Should have closed the meeting.
Oh, they'll close the meeting.
Okay. All right, so, hearing done, we're closed, a public hearing. Any discussion, Council?
As I said, we've discussed it.
Need a motion?
I'll move the Town Council to approve the subdivision to parcel 42A-9-1-7 to create a second parcel, parcel 42A-9-1-7A, approve the zoning of parcel, the rezoning of parcel 42A-9-1-7A from Business B1 to Plan Neighborhood Development District and to incorporate parcel 42A-9-1A-7A into Luray Planning, Planned Neighborhood Development as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion, Council? Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay, the next item of agenda is the proclamation of recognition for our wonderful town clerk, Ms. Mary Boils. This is certainly bittersweet for me. I've enjoyed working with Mary, only a year as mayor, but it's been wonderful, and I thank you for everything you've done for us. Again, it's only been a year for me, but my esteemed colleague and Vice Mayor has much more experience working with Mary, having hired her in 1986. So, Mary, do you have any?
Eighty-five? No, only to say, Mary, thank you so much. I had the pleasure of working with Mary, I think, three times as a town manager. And this is my third term on the Town Council, working with you. And Mary, you've always, you've always been a true asset to the town and to the Council, and we really appreciate everything you've done for the town.
If you'll join us down here, we do have a proclamation and a small gift for you.
Just let me get one of y'all looking this way once. Makes a better picture. Mary, you gotta smile this time.
Make it.
You ready to look up? Mary? Thank you, if you would.
Whereas on August 5th, 1985, excuse me, I had a new role. Mary Boils began her service to citizens of Luray, and whereas, Ms. Boils has been instrumental in helping the Town Council in discussions and implementation of town budgets to best serve our citizens and promote the incredible development of Luray as a town we know and love, and whereas, due to her diligence and hard work, Ms. Boils has assisted Town Council in navigating challenging financial crisis with the tenants providing even services to our citizens. And whereas, Ms. Boils has repeatedly presented opportunities to Town Council to restructure our debt, to reduce expenses, and expand our opportunities to pursue infrastructure improvements. And whereas, Ms. Boils has distinguished herself as a hardworking and dedicated public servant who at all times was committed to helping our community with fair and consistent utility and tax payment initiatives. And whereas, Ms. Boils has provided invaluable leadership and guidance to the town manager, department's heads, and staff related to all financial and human services matters. And whereas, Ms. Boils has cultivated strong cooperative relationship with residents, community groups, businesses, other local government officials, and other members of our community. And whereas, Ms. Boils has announced her retirement from the town effective December 31st, 2021. Now, therefore, bid resolved that the mayor and members of Town Council of the town of Luray hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for Ms. Boils' dedication and commitment to the town of Luray. Congratulate her on the occasion of her retirement and wish her the best and continued success in her retirement and future endeavors.
Thank you.
So it's not an alarm clock. Good job, Mayor. Yes, pictures came out nice.
All right, Council, I need a resolution to approve the proclamation.
Mayor, I'd like to move that the Town Council approves this proclamation of recognition for Mary Boils as presented and wish her a long and wonderful retirement.
Second? Discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, Imagination Station bid award. Oh, appointment of town clerk, we're gonna move that to later on when the closed session. We'll open back up and open session after we complete the closed session. Okay. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider the award of the Imagination Station Playground Replacement Project to all recreation in an amount not to exceed $360,000. Their base bid is $350,000 plus a $10,000 contingency amount. The seven proposals were received from four firms for this project. Our evaluation committee has evaluated all of those proposals based upon, one, the ages that they served, two, inclusiveness of equipment, three, theme and aesthetics, four, conceptual design, five, price, six, warranty, seven, craftsmanship and material quality, eight, vendor experience, and nine, code compliance. Their recommended proposal achieved a score of 80.5 versus 74.5 for the next highest ranked proposal. And staff are recommending the use of ARPA revenue recovery funds for this project expense.
Council, any questions?
Just a quick question. In the very back, is that a zip line I see in the picture? I couldn't tell what the pictures were.
You've got a different playground there.
Yeah, that's wrong. I was just curious. I had someone asking me about that, yeah.
Which picture are you looking at?
Well, maybe you can show us the one that they selected.
Yes, maybe that's right there.
That is the one that was selected.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, that looks different than.
And all recreation, they're out of, where were they out of? They're kind of local, aren't they? Ashburn. Ashburn, Virginia. Okay, that's. Steve, if I could just ask something on this. And I look at the, we've got pictures of about four different sketches or examples of playgrounds.
Those were ones that weren't selected. The ones that, in your packet, are on the white paper.
Right.
Those are for the firms that were not selected. The one that's on the cream colored, oh, I'm sorry, you don't have paper anymore. The one that is the second page from the recommendation of the committee is the one that was selected. And they wanted to provide you copies of the other ones, just so you had, so you were aware of what was presented.
Because I've noticed some of the others have, it's like, more amenities. There were, and they had bids that actually went up to about a million dollars. Okay. Okay, because I'm looking at, like, there's one here that Carolina, I'm just asking this. Recreation number one on one of the other pictures there, option one.
Option one.
That was $640,000, I understand. But when I look at that, what I see different than any of the others, including this one, there's like a pavilion type area within the playground.
Yes, sir.
That looks like tables, picnic tables or whatever. Personally, what I really like about that, the way Imagination Station is set up over there, the picnic shelter is, I don't know the exact distance, probably 150 feet, 200 some feet from the playground, where if there's birthday parties, things like that, where families at the pavilion, kids going over to a playground are then separated from adults and unsupervised somewhat, where this design with a pavilion within the playground seemed genius. That's what jumped down at me with that one, was the fact that if a family has a birthday party or something for little ones, all the adults can even be within the playground. It's just general supervision of kids and all of that. And I guess what I'm saying, and I look, and I mean, I see the price difference. And the playgrounds look different according to the price, which is understandable, too. I guess it's just when Ralph Dean Park is our main town park in town, I'd hate to see us cut corners on what is the playground for children that is our true playground as far as all right. Does that make sense? Yes, sir. I think, too, though, we have to, we have to make sure that the bid that we're accepting is within the scope of the RFP that we, that we, that we released. Right. And I'm not so sure that that was in the RFP, was it?
No, the RFP did specify our budget of $350,000. And unfortunately, a number of the proposers gave us what, you know, they would recommend without a budget.
Right.
And that said, there is nothing that would prevent the town from looking at where that little, we can look at providing additional seating areas within the park as it's completed, so that parents can be situated closer to their families.
Or even, I guess, other equipment added.
Yes, sir.
As far as actual playground. Yeah, I mean, I don't. It just looks a little sparse compared to some of the others when I look at that image. And I realize we're comparing apples to oranges here on money. Does a lot, so, okay, I just.
The only other question I had is, has there been thought of putting up fencing in some, at some level, just so the kid can't dart right out into the parking lot?
No, sir, but that's not, that is something that can be added.
Yeah, I know it doesn't have to be around, totally around as some of the other options show, but just some type of impediment to the little ones darting out, which they're prone to do. At least mine are, so.
Where are we on that? They started turning down the old one, Steve, I haven't been over there.
No, sir. I believe we were working with the contractor to finalize that, and I believe they had a few other projects that they were actually working on with the town that they needed to complete before they could dedicate their staff to proceeding with the removal. But they've indicated that it should take them no more than a couple of weeks, once they arrive outside.
Well, I think you had a very good committee review this, too. And this was the committee's recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, Steve, the way I read it was, our people would tear the old one down.
Well, that was our plan until we had a proposal from a local contractor who was interested.
That's the extra money. So it will be open supposedly by June 17th, is that right?
That, well, yes, sir. And by, the original schedule had us actually awarding this in January.
Right.
So by providing the contractors some additional time, we hope that, it shouldn't be no later than June, but we're hoping that they'll be able to accelerate that, that time.
People love that playground.
Yes, sir.
All right, Council. What's your desire? Accept the bid?
Yeah, I see no reason why not to.
Need a motion?
I move the Town Council approve the award of the Imagination Station Replacement Project to all recreation in an amount not to exceed $360,000, with funding to come from the ARPA Revenue Recovery Funds as presented.
Second that.
No more discussion? All right, Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, website redesign bid award?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider the award of the website redesign and development project, the Standout Arts, in an amount not to exceed $33,050. Staff have reviewed the proposals along with our IT consultant, Form Networks, and have identified through the review and evaluation of the bids, that Standout is the recommended performer of the project. We do appreciate the other bid. It was a very tight review of both of the projects. Based on Form Networks, the level of detail provided regarding the platform by Standout Arts did give them an edge as far as just the evaluation.
Discussion?
Will this result in us being able to have individualized emails accessible on the site again?
Yes, sir.
And the online payment module, that'll, that will still be an option?
Yes, sir. No, yes, ma'am. Yes, we are planning to continue to have that, and we will have that as, when we work with Standout, that will be an easier access to get to it, so that people are more aware.
For personal, for personal and business?
For anyone with paying utilities and taxes, not business licenses yet. We would need to work with our provider outside of the website to include that.
Because when I was reviewing this, it looked like there would be, let's see, they would be able to make submit applications, right, online?
Applications we will be able to accept, but the payment for some of it will be, again, we're dealing with different components. The payment is actually done through BAI, I believe, and I don't know that we can expand what they will allow us to take payments online. The website, we can accept and expand what documents can be transmitted through, through the website. It's simply the payment that is a little bit outside of what the vendor's able to handle.
All right, so I understand. Can you make water bill payments online or not?
You can currently, and you will continue to be able to.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
You said it'd be a little more of a prominent location on the website.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's on there. You just gotta kind of go to the bottom and search around a little bit. And when would this go live?
I'll need to, we'll need to talk with Standout Arts. I believe they said they could get it done in about a couple of months.
Yeah, be May, the latest. Are they, are they Harrisonburg? Harrisonburg. Okay, is that Shannon?
And they didn't catch it in the, in the scope there, so did we select a certain number of content import, a number of years of content importing for our past agendas, past minutes?
Just one year.
Just one year that we're gonna be transferring over?
And six months is the norm for other sites.
Really? Is that something we can manually do later on, I presume?
If somebody wanted additional records or older records, they can certainly ask for them.
Sure.
We have them, we can provide them. It's just, it bogs up a lot of our online capability, the more we have years and years and years worth of.
Sure, I understand it.
Well, Steve, does staff, do they have the ability to make changes to the website itself? Do you have to go through somebody?
That was one of the benefits of Standout Arts. They indicated that they would have components that staff could work with. It was not as clear in the revise portion. It seemed to indicate that you would have to work through them to modify their website.
Okay, I got confused again there.
The vendor that we are recommending, Standout Arts, specified that there will be components of the website that staff will have the ability to modify.
So you can make things in the last minute?
Yes, sir, we can update different. And that was not as clear in the other proposal.
Okay.
Good questions. Anybody else?
I probably should have read all this. How about packets and meetings? Are you able to populate meetings on this? That is part of the, the council agendas and planning commission agendas are currently on our website, and they will continue to be available. Okay. Yes, sir. That's, that's where typically you only have six month of carryover on other websites. And they, they are recommending that we, that we limit it to, to that amount going forward. Again, as Brian indicated, it just takes up a lot of space and can bog down the system.
I see photo galleries included on here. Will they be, will they, will they be doing any imagery for us? Will we have to provide that to them?
No, that was part of their proposal, was that they will come in and spend some time taking photographs of Luray and incorporating them into the website. And go to our Facebook account and get a lot.
Are they gonna do any social media for us or just the website?
Well, the, their proposal indicates that we will be able to link our social media so that it will appear on the website page, so that wherever we are able to update, if we're able to update on social media, then if you go to the, the website, it should have the most current information that we've released.
Anybody else? Need a motion? Y'all ready to move forward? Need a motion? Y'all ready to move forward?
I'll move that town council approve the award of the website redesign and development project to Stand Out Arts LLC in the amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand fifty dollars as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Will you all be, internally, will you have a committee that will be working with this? Or will, will you be the project manager on it?
Well, actually, Brian is taking the lead. We'll be working with all the department heads so that they can identify what needs to, the, the, what information that they want to have in court, included on their, their, their portion of the websites and it, it will be a group effort.
And will we have the opportunity to review it before you give any sound?
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Daniel?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lohr?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, West Main Street Pocket Park.
Yes, sir. Counsel has requested to consider the award of the West Main Pocket Park Conceptual Design Project to the Virginia Tech Community Design Assistance Center in the amount of fifty-eight hundred fifty dollars. Counsel had discussed pursuing a, a concept, some conceptual designs for the privately owned property that the town would then be leasing from the property owner to allow for parking and other community events on the west side of Main Street.
I would just update, and I think I copied a few people in the email. Of course, this is the lot between the tax service and I guess the Lion Brucker Building, the seventy by two hundred empty lot that we've been talking about. I did talk to, at one point, Jackie and I, a few months ago, had, Steve and I met with the Virginia Tech to talk about it. And then Jackie and I had talked that Virginia Main Street has kind of the same service for design options. It's probably not as comprehensive at Virginia Tech, but Frazier and Associates is sort of like a subcontractor, subcontractor for Virginia Main Street that will essentially do the same thing. I, I did call Kathy Frazier today and she remembers communicating and hearing something from Jackie, but basically, all they need from us to move forward and start a kind of a conceptual design is just a request from, from Jackie and LDI. So having talked to Ms. Frazier for ten minutes or so, she kind of made it sound like, hey, it's really no problem. We can do it all virtually. We're familiar with Luray. We could sit down and talk to different stakeholders and have a couple of meetings and then get back some ideas to you. I also talked to Ms. Kramer and I think maybe if, if we did choose to go with the Frazier and Associates, maybe between now and, I said, maybe sometime in January or February, maybe we could engage with Frazier. Of course, I'd probably send something through pretty soon. Yeah, she said it really wasn't any kind of big issue getting us on the, on the agenda and working with us, but I thought in the interim, we could simply try to work with Melinda to see if we can come up with a, I said a twenty-five year lease for a dollar a year. We accept responsibility, you know, it's, it's a leased property. I kind of point out to the parking lot that was behind Uncle Buck's there, that we just kind of did the same thing. We leased for a long time, a, a long time to, we approved it and leased it. So maybe work out a lease agreement that she's happy with, that we're happy with. And then once we have that, we can move forward with Frazier. And it really is no commitment in the terms of we can get the visuals back and everyone falls in love. We could talk about moving forward with it. If, if not, we can, you know, so. Sort of change gears, but today I want to reach out with, with Frazier just to see if they had gotten my, my email and Jackie's email, and they have, but if that sounds like an acceptable alternative. And Steve, you can surely contact Virginia Tech and tell them we appreciate their time. And they've done a lot of work here and I know with the Rex Center and they do some design work. So I think we'll be seeing them around in the future, but I think maybe this might be, hey, it would save us some money and I think we'd get the same product again.
Yeah, so what are we, asking us to, we're not going to award the bid tonight. We're gonna, do you want us to consider awarding the bid to the Frazier or what?
Well, really, not the award of bid to Frazier. They just do it as part of the design services. And I really think, and Melinda has worked with them, too, with some of her different properties. I really think we will probably get about the same thing. I think, I think Virginia Tech's more comprehensive, but I think what, what Frazier and Associates can provide us will, will be adequate for, they're not construction plans. At the end of the day, we don't really need construction plans for it. We just want someone to put together a vision and then we could vet it and talk about it between ourselves and people in the public. So I guess maybe a, a motion to, or Steve, maybe Jason, to, to engage with Melinda and see if we can come up with some sort of what would be an acceptable lease agreement. And then if we come to that term, we can reach out. Well, I suggested that maybe Jackie go ahead and reach out to Frazier now and to get on their docket to maybe do some work for us and into January, February, they'll set up some public meetings. I mean, some meetings, you said we'll do it virtually, can do it by Zoom and have some, all of us in and talk about the property. She's familiar where it is and all that. So, sorry to kind of change the gears, but I just felt like I want to reach out and hear from Frazier. And I think more importantly, Melinda thought that was a good idea. She has nothing against Virginia Tech, don't get me wrong, but she has experience with Frazier and sees that as a, as a fine alternative to, to work with, as I do, too.
Counsel, anybody else?
I'd just like to say, I've thought about this project over the last couple of months since first presented. And let me say, this is nothing to do with the property owner. It's nothing to do with the proposed ideas or whatever these ideas may be coming back. I will say that I do have concerns with the town doing capital improvements to a piece of property that we don't own. And I realize that a twenty or a twenty-five year lease at a, almost nothing rate. I realize that's nice, but at the end of the day, if it's paving that lot, if it's building structures, if it's putting water, whatever may be on that lot, considerable amount of money, that in twenty to twenty-five years, it may be a different person that owns it. It may be that the same person owns it, but has different plans for the properties. I relate this to Creekside Commons. I think Creekside Commons was a wonderful change. We took a piece of unused property that was not very attractive. This is attractive up there. It's just happened to be open space, green lot. But that owner was approached and sold that lot to the town for a very reasonable price. The town purchased it and then began to invest with the improvement. So there's the paving, there's the curbing, there's the parking, there's the charging station. All this stuff is in place, but the town owns it. We're not going to wonder, what are we going to do about the charging station? And are we still going to add that parking twenty years from now or whatever? It's, the town owns it. And as a town, we are involved with some other things in town that we don't own, but we partnered with years and years ago and understand that. And those, I'm not saying that needs to end. I think that needs to continue because a commitment was made. But from this point future, I personally am not for spending taxpayer money for capital improvements on property that the town doesn't own. And has nothing to do with the tech analysis or Frazier and Associates. Met with Frazier and Associates many times over the years with LDI. They do great work. They bring good recommendations and I'm sure it'd be a good plan. But I think private property should be developed and improved by the private owners, not the town mixing with that. I, I just, and I've talked with some other citizens that have the same feelings, too, so I'll leave it at that.
I understand that, Jason. It, it might be better to think of it in terms of if someone had a facility, what we're trying to achieve already done, and they said, hey, we'll rent it to the, or we'll lease it to the town of Luray for X amount a month. And we'll, we'll extend that lease for, you, you have options through twenty-five years. At the end of it, you know, it's ours. We can do it, what we want, but, I mean, it's basically what we're doing. It's the same thing, right? Is if we were to lease it for twenty-five years, someone else's property. Because if you just amortize whatever the cost is of this capital improvement and spread it over twenty-five years, that's what we're investing. Is it? I'm not saying that it's the right thing to do or, or not do. I think as a council, we're going to come to that decision at some point, but is this a valuable service or asset for twenty-five years or is it not?
Well, I think it all comes down to cost. You know, what you're saying.
Exactly, I agree.
If someone else put up the initial cost to develop that property, hundreds of thousands of dollars to put whatever's there, and then they offered it to us at a monthly rate, that yes, if we did the numbers, yes, this makes sense possibly, but to, but for us to take taxpayers' money and, and build on that lot, unlike business. You know, I, I look at this, this is not going to be a revenue generator for the town. It's also going to be a continued expense for the town to maintain it, keep things repaired, all of that. Where, you know, of course, businesses every day will lend us, rent a space to operate a business, but they're generating their revenue at that space. So it's a, it's a different model than the town putting money into a piece, a property that we don't own, that we can't move those items. We can't take that asphalt. We can't take that curb or sidewalk or structure and roof. It's going to be there at the end of that lease. And if it's a real success and people love it, and I'd hope it would be, but if that property had changed hands and the new owners just had to abide by the lease because it was a lease, but then at the end of that, they're like, hey, town, sorry, you know, you're gone. Then we're, we're dealing with that. I don't know. I just.
Yeah, I, I would say.
I've seen that as been a problem in the past with some things and if it's predictable, it's preventable.
After twenty-five years, most of the improvements would probably have to be replaced anyway. I mean, it's an opportunity. She's willing to lease a source for a dollar a year. I think it's just an area of town that would benefit from something, you know, regardless of what it may be, what it may cost. It could be on the lower end of the cost depending on, you know. But she's willing to, to do it. She, she sees it as an asset to her properties and public space and this is the opportunity that she's, I think, very graciously and generously providing to town. And again, it's not without precedent in the town that we've done situations, public-private partnership or a leaseback. Doesn't happen all the time. I think ownership is ideally the ideal, but I think this is, if you have something for twenty-five years and the improvements really, again, would have to be probably pretty much replaced after twenty-five years anyway. It's not like, you know, you turn around and she's going to have some, you know, it's going to be some major asset that's all of a sudden relatively take back over. It's very, very possible. And maybe this could be discussed in some sort of a lease, an option to purchase it at some point. But, um, yeah, that's the way the council feels. I mean, I didn't just say, you know.
I'm just bringing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, again, yeah, that's, that's no, that's no problem. I mean, I, I just, again, I just do my, you know, work with her and Lawrence and different things. And I knew that lot was there and just sort of, you know, you know, as I said from the get-go, seeing the activity across the street and just thinking that would be a great spot for some space, regardless of what it is or what it looks like, or if it's a, or if it's market sheltered or just a pocket park or.
So if we were to move forward with Frazier's, there will be no cost to us right now to, at minimum, again, have them take a look at it and to provide a concept, which I think would be good due diligence. A, B, to Joey, or excuse me, to Councilman Sowers' point, I, I think that if we looked at that amortization and considered the value add to our community over that span in comparison to what the investment would be. I mean, I, I'm not so sure that we can make a decision at this time until we've done that. And so I would argue that I think the best next steps before we even entertain any confrontation with Kramer would be to have Jackie follow up with Frazier and Associates, see if, you know, when they can start, start taking a look at that and get us something tangible. And then if we deem at that time, that it may be of value to the community, perhaps we pursue Kramer.
Would the owner be willing to sell that property?
I don't, I don't think, yeah, I don't think so. I've talked to her. I don't think she's willing, willing to, to sell it. Just.
And I bring that up because, which is true with what I'm saying, it's, you know, if we owned it, I have a different perspective on it. And I think we also need to ask ourselves, if that lot was for sale today at the assessed value, I have no idea what the assessed value is.
I think it's around forty, some thousand.
Okay, if that lot was for sale today at the assessed value, would we as a town be looking to purchase that lot to do the exact same thing we're talking about here? Or are we being attracted because of such a great deal of a dollar a year? Which that is a great deal. I, I understand completely, but is that what's pulling us to it, pulling us to it? Or are we looking at it because, hey, that is the spot. We've always loved to have that spot or that would be the spot. The only thing we've got to think about, as we develop pocket parks, that's business Main Street frontage. So we're now taking a piece of property that could be developed by an actual business, which is producing revenue for the town, where we could have a pocket park possibly in a, another spot right convenient to Main Street, such as even just Page Street, one block over, that would still be accessible to downtown shoppers, but not be taking a prime business piece of property that now won't be developed for business. It's going to be a.
It'll be vacant in ten years. I think it'll be vacant. I mean, I don't think, you know.
I'd, I'd like to see just what the ideas that Frazier comes up with or the other group comes up with. Because I don't think we have much of a reason to argue about what's going to happen until we see an idea, like Councilman Lurin said. I mean, they may have ideas that I haven't thought of yet. Instead of just a parking lot or a place for picnic tables so that tourists can eat, I mean, I don't have a clue.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree wholeheartedly with your last, that sentiment regarding opportunity for development, you know, as it relates to commercial development. And yes, all day long. That's a very fair argument. In the meantime, though, and, you know, it hasn't vacant for so long, we do see demand and opportunity right now for kind of some additional shared spaces. I mean, you know, we look at what, and, and you've done a good job there at Baby Moon's, but also up at the deli and then putting those tables out there. But we ride by on Sundays and they're full. I, I see it all, again, I think right now when I'm thinking about shared spaces for communities, third spaces where, you know, we can have more downtown foot traffic. We've got re-informed, dedicated space. They can, they can shop our merchants, you know, pick up some lunch or, you know, whatever meal and, and keep them downtown longer so that they are patroning our, our businesses. As opposed to just driving right on by and going out to the big French house stores.
Yeah, I guess.
Which we appreciate, too.
I'm kind of torn with the attractiveness of having an amenity like that there. And Jason's point, which I think that Stephanie elaborated on, is a good point. We're taking a prime piece of real estate. We're limiting that for any kind of private development that would provide some type of, not only amenities for the community, but also revenue for the town. I guess, as the town attorney, the, the lease for a situation like this, could that be, would that be drafted in such a way that the, that the property couldn't be sold? And if it were sold, the lease ran with the property?
Yes, it could be. Yes, sir.
So that is not a threat of her selling the property out from under us after we've made improvements on it?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
During the life of the lease?
Yes.
During the life, yeah. So then, I, I mean, I think I agree. At this juncture, let's take a look at what Frazier might come up with and see what they, and, and then vet it with the public and, and see if everyone thinks it's worthwhile for the town to enter into it. I mean, I think it's.
Well, Lea, I just want to say, I appreciate you doing some groundwork and going out and meeting people and talking, even if it goes nowhere in the end. It's, it's great to just bring in the idea. I think it's, I think it's a sound.
That's what happens when you elect a planner.
That's right. No, but I, I do, I appreciate it.
Yeah, but thank you. Yeah, okay. So we'll just at least move forward with Frazier and see what, does that sound good? Okay.
Yeah.
Vote on that?
I, I don't guess it would hurt.
Jackie, do you need a vote or anything formal from the council to move forward with Frazier?
All right, Mr. Burke, Luray Landing, final plat.
Yes, sir. This is for information only. The town has received a request from Baker Development submitting their preliminary and final plat applications for parcels ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen to be subdivided into twenty-four developable lots with three open space lots. The planning commission is considering this at their meeting on Wednesday. And once they've issued a recommendation, council can consider it at your January meeting.
Any questions on that discussion? All right, we'll move on to our, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure, pal, I'm sorry. My apologies.
So our intent with this, and I went over this with Steve and Ryan and also with Mr. Watkins. When we presented the master use plan update, we did, we went ahead and laid out all of those lots, which is a little atypical. Usually we just kind of color the areas and say we won't come up with here. So our intent in this process was to move forward in the street line process to get this forty-foot route. So when I. So, um, when I submitted those, it was wholeheartedly my fault in scheduling with this to see that we had to go through the preliminary plat again, um, along with, I thought this was just a final plat submission approval since we've already approved that master use plan showing those locations. So it's kind of a long shot, the way we have our contracts set up and the next phases of this kind of all depend on this close date. So it is my request, if, um, planning commission would approve that on Wednesday night, I know it's holidays, but would the council be willing to entertain a special meeting to vote on this so we can go to closing, um, one in a year? And as we move on to the next phases now, but I know the process will be, um, it's really important, so just to request, um, if you guys would consider it, please.
Gotta have public hearings, right?
The public hearing notice requirements.
Uh, yeah, we don't need a public hearing for the subdivision.
But the, the code is specific that the, the planning commission does have to offer you a, a recommendation before you can consider it.
So we can do that? Counsel, what's your pleasure? What would our, what would our work session, that would be the twenty, Christmas is on Sunday?
Mary, would we have to have a public meeting? I mean, can we have a?
No, no, we, all we have to do is have a, uh, just a special.
Fiscal meeting, could we have one or we?
Uh, I don't think we can do that, can we, Jason?
No, sir.
No.
It's gotta be fiscal meeting.
You going away?
No, I was just asking.
Well, we don't have a work session scheduled for.
Well, we didn't, but I'm wondering if we went ahead and did it, that, well, it would be a special meeting, it wouldn't be a work session anymore, would it? That would be, it's, Christmas is on, back to that, Christmas is on Saturday, twenty-five, twenty-six, it'd be the twenty-eighth? I don't have my calendar.
Twenty-seventh, right?
Of what, December?
Uh, twenty-seventh is a town holiday.
Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. When's planning commission meet?
Uh, this, uh, this Wednesday, fifteenth.
Can we meet, can we do it the twenty-first?
Just, I was, I know we haven't gotten to the, they are, the, uh, rescue plan money, but that could also be an opportunity to continue that conversation. Just if, if we want to take advantage of using the meeting for more than just looking at this plat.
One, one of you in a close?
Well, grab Mary, one more meeting.
Give me, give me that clock back. Don't start using it.
There it goes, Tuesday.
So on the Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, that's what we're looking at?
Oh, the twenty-first.
Monday's the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-first, we're back a week, okay, anybody have a conflict with that date?
I don't think so.
And do we wanna make it a, um, a special meeting and also discuss ARPA?
If we're gonna act on this, we have to make it a special meeting.
We're gonna get together, we might as well try to do other things if we, if, you know, if this raises ups to it, but we can figure that out after we have to talk about it, I guess.
Uh, it's twenty-first.
We talking five-thirty instead of seven?
Uh, that's up to you.
Yeah, five-three.
Five-thirty is better for me.
Oh, I can't make the twenty-first.
Huh?
I couldn't make the twenty-first, but, yeah, that's fine, I mean, you can, I mean, obviously you can still do it.
Kinda really.
Yeah, I have a meeting, I forgot.
Oh.
Twenty-first, but.
So regardless of the topic.
It's the twenty-first.
Right, right. Is everyone sure they're gonna make it there?
I, I can make it.
I can make it.
Twenty-first.
Okay. So we still have a point.
Everybody go to twenty-first?
We'll save the ARPA talk.
Okay.
Five-third?
Five-third.
Five-third?
Five-third and twenty-first.
All right. Thank you, town.
This is what you've always shown for these townhouses, have been a master plan since almost the get, the beginning.
We switched it to, um, villas at the time, but the majority of the townhouse, we've added more density solely because now we know what builder, if a builder is not a three-story townhouse, it's a two-story. So we gained some of that width in the ends that we were, how we, um, for any development. Now we know that we've got our consent galling, so that's, that's.
All right. All right, Mr. Burke, ARPA funding.
Yes, sir, uh, council's requested to, uh, consider the, uh, following your, your, your discussion last week, staff have been working to develop a multi-year plan for ARPA funding and, uh, staff are requesting council's consideration of the items that were discussed at the work session to be approved as your twenty-twenty-one expenditures so that we can proceed with, um, at least the initial payment for the Imagination Station, the influence screening and the ditch pumps at the wastewater plant, the replacement of the West Lue Lift Station, acquisition of a new vacuum truck, and then pursuing some new remote read water meters for our utility system.
Why?
No, please go ahead, thank you.
Why is it fifty-six for the Imagine, why, why not the four?
Because we only have two-point-five million in, available in twenty-twenty-one. Um, if you look at the, the graph, uh, well, the chart, in twenty-twenty-two, we've got the remainder.
I see.
When that comes, becomes available.
Thank you.
We actually have that in hand, don't we, the two and a half million, we have that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, if, if you, from our meeting, I took some notes, it looks like, um, there are three, cause when, when we left it at the work session, you know, we, with Lenny and Joey, we, you know, we were kind of going through that list. And out of this list here that we have, it looks like the West Lue Lift Station and Remote Water Meters and the Public Works Vacuum Truck were still kind of, we were still sort of working through that list. I mean, my preference is if you look at everything, take those three things off, the West Lue Station, the Remote Water Meters, the Vacuum Truck, and if you add hazard play pay in, we, that's one-point-one-nine million, uh, that'd be obligated. And I'm putting in the, the full price, three-sixty for the, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for Imagination Station. So a little over twenty-one percent, again, that, that includes the, the hazard pay. Those three items, the lift station, remote water, and the, and the vacuum, that's about one-point-five-seven million, those three things. So, you know, get us well over half the money would be obligated. You know, personally, I would like to, to work through the rest of the list with police and recrea, you know, recreation, then obviously, you know, nonprofits and maybe other pitch of funding before we obligate more money. But I, I also understand that, and I know Jerry had told me this, that, you know, obviously, I think between those three things, the West Lue Station, the Remote Water Meters and the Vacuum, we're gonna fund one of those for one understanding and that the West Lue Lift Station is, is in pretty bad shape right now. Is that, I mean, that's like not even a, so I guess my thought is, is I, I, I really wouldn't feel comfortable, especially with the Remote Water Meters, I'd like to kind of find out a little more about that. And Joey and I talked about that a little bit, is, you know, if, if it's the West Lue Water Lift is something we know we have to fund, then maybe throwing that onto the list. But I would still, for Remote Water Meters and the Vacuum, I would rather have a work session that we really get a full totality of what we're funding, what we would have left. And then it's the build-in for inflation and administration we still haven't quite done. Uh, and maybe the administrative costs will be straightforward, maybe it won't be that, you know, if we're making these big purchases. But I, I just, um, I guess I've come to the thought that maybe taking a little more time, is that necessarily a bad thing for us to work through this?
And Lee and I echo a lot of what you say, uh, regarding Remote Water Meters. I'm not saying they're, they might be great. I'd love, I'd still like to see a more quantitative return on investment, just a sense. I know we've talked about it, like qualitatively, that it will save money, but I'd like to get a better sense of really how much we're talking, because that's a big investment. If, if it pays for itself over twenty years, well, we can probably find a better use for those funds. Uh, the vacuum truck, to me, sounded like a no-brainer based on the previous conversations we had. You know, I don't know what everyone else heard in that meeting, but I heard a, a return on investment of under two years. So that, uh, that, that's the top of my list, quite honestly, at that point, because then we can use all those savings to do everything else on the list over time, so.
Well, I think the vacuum truck is, but I, I think the West Lue Lift Station is the priority. If, if we don't, if we don't spend this money, we, we're gonna end up spending this money out of our budget.
Oh, no, excuse me, I, I'm not excluding that one either, yeah, I agree.
Particularly with the development, it sounds like it's getting ready to come online out there. We're gonna, we're gonna need that, we're gonna need that. Um, the vac truck makes a lot of sense to me, um, and, um, I'm okay waiting on the remote meters, maybe taking another look at that. I, I, I think that they, they too would, would be a good investment, it's.
As we're looking at the development out there, should, uh, should those meters, as that gets rolling, which could be, I don't know what the time would be, but would it make sense to at least do remote readers and new installations from here forward? And then go and retro or replace old ones over time as money allows, but.
Can you do that? I mean, can you still manually read the remote? I, I.
But the, the, the.
Yeah, how does that work?
That would be, that would, in, in a perfect world, if we had already bid out which system we were going with, then yes, we could specify that. The, the problem is, is that, uh, because it is such a big investment, we would have to put it out for a public bid. And we, I know we have a preference, which product we would be going with, but we would have to, um, go forward with that public bid to, um, arrive at which system we would commit to because it will be a major commitment of, of whichever system is selected. So, yes, sir, it would be nice if we could start specifying one, but I am hesitant to say, for, uh, to say that the town should adopt this or that remote read product until we've actually gone through the procurement process. And, uh, Jason, is that reasonable?
Yes.
Makes sense, it makes a lot of sense.
It does, yeah.
Hundred new meters and then two years from now, we're yanking those out and replacing them with remote readers.
No, but the idea to phase them in is a good idea, if we could do it, you know.
Yeah, okay.
You can't manually read the remote meters?
Definitely, yes.
Like, it's gonna take a gamble, like, hey, we realize that.
Yeah, which remote system gets what I'm talking about.
You're gonna end up with two different systems, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
What's just, you, you know the cost per meter ballpark?
Uh, with the remote read, I think it's a five, six hundred dollars?
Min, minimum, there's four different major manufacturers that we're looking at right now.
And what sort of lifespan do they have?
Ten years on the battery minimum and, and then, um, the actual other parts are, um, some of them have, uh, parts up to forty years on some of the other parts.
You just gotta change the battery out, some kind of.
Change the battery out, that's just value every once every decade.
If that seven forty-seven was included in there, when we do, I'll begin that process.
Well, the, the hope was with both the lift station, the vacuum truck and, and the meters was that we could proceed with that, uh, the, the RFPs as soon as possible. Um, again, the timing of the, the meters, if, if, if council's more comfortable, we can't put that off till, till twenty-two, twenty-two. But we, we, we definitely would request the, the vacuum truck and, and the lift station because the sooner we get that going, we know that there is development that is gonna be coming soon. And that lift station is on its last leg, it, it truly is.
And if you did exclude the r, r, remote work, uh, water meter, just for now, until we continue the conversations, and you put the vacuum truck and the West Lue Lift Station, you're looking at a little over two million or thirty-seven percent obligated. So just as a, for everybody who's interested, still leaves us quite a bit, but, um, I, I, I still, like I said, I like to go through, I mean, I, I'd be okay with the lift station and vacuum truck now that I've talked to, you know, but I, I still would like to, maybe next month, January, sit down, keep hammering that list out and, so.
I agree, at least until we've looked at, um, the other departments.
Yeah.
So we possibly are just putting off the remote meters maybe for a month or two, until we look this again, well, that.
Could we just get a high-low estimate of what, what type of savings we're talking about? You know, doesn't have to be anything huge or super technical, but just like a, a by po, uh, of the remote meters?
I, it's not a, necessarily a, a savings, well, the, the benefit to the town is that you will realize more accurate readings, because some of our meters now are, are fairly old, ten to twenty years old. So as it ages, you, with just the mechanical, you, you don't get as accurate an amount that you're, you're billing. So I think the estimates are anywhere from ten to twenty percent that, you know, and I hate to say this, but your bill will, will go up once we go to the newer meter. So the, the benefit to the town is not to the benefit of the customer, uh, it's just that we're realizing, well, we're realizing a more accurate reading of the water that we as consumers are using. Now, right now, as a consumer, I'm not being fully billed for what I'm using.
It could be under billed too, potentially.
No, no.
Steve, has Stanley gone with the remote read meters?
Yes, they've, they've, they, they.
I mean, isn't this gonna help us and our personnel of going out and reading the meters all the time? That's a savings.
Well, right now, we only have two, uh, meter readers who also assist Public Works. So I don't see us reducing the number of staff because you're still having to, to, you know.
We still have all the others.
My, my, the, the reading is incorrect, we still need someone to go out and confirm that what is being reported over the air is actually what's being at the machine. So, uh, I don't see us in the near future saving anything personnel-wise. The, 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 the benefit is that it not only gives us a more accurate reading, it also gives us a time broke, a break, breakdown, you know. It's big, big brother, if, if, if I were to call in and say, you know, I didn't use, you know, any water during the Super Bowl and I go in and we can see that, yeah, we can almost tell you when, when, when somebody was going to the bathroom in your house because there'll be a tick in the, in, in the, the water. So, there, there is a, there, there's a benefit to the, to the utility that we are in a better position to say when the usage was going, rather than, you know, during this thirty days, you used this many thousand gallons. We can get about, down to, not necessarily the minute, but at least the hour of when the consumption was done.
So, so what I would really hate to see though, is we spend seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand to charge our customers four-hundred-thousand more. So the town spent three-hundred-and-fifty thousand extra and charged their customers extra. I, I don't want that, you know, I'd rather give someone free water than, than spend twice as much.
Yeah, but on the overall scheme, you have to look at this as not only a, from the aspect of what you're saving financially, but it's, it's a management tool for, for the utilities that help you plan for, um, future growth in the utility systems, for, to plan for.
Services, you know, when you use it.
Services that we're gonna need to provide, I mean, it's a, and it, and it, although it may not save a lot of manpower initially, it does put together a uni, a, a very succinct system that you can document this year in terms of your usage and for planning and that kind of thing. I know it's a big ticket for that.
And I can appreciate that, yeah, I know.
And I understand, yeah, spending this kind of money to charge more people for their water. But the fact of the matter is, in the long run, if we, if we're charging for what we're, we're producing, in the long run, we're gonna probably end up saving, uh, somebody too.
Well, it's also an equity thing, cause some meters are getting replaced. So those folks are being charged exactly what they use and other folks are getting by with not being charged for what they're using, so.
Yeah, two, two other things to think about too, you know, the meters are the cash registers for both enterprise funds. Our sewer charges are based directly on our water, so it's not just the water program, it's water and sewer for those enterprise fund. And you get brand-new equipment, sitters, meters, everything in those vaults. So that's, uh, you know, long-term savings. But by stabilizing those prices and those measurements, you're also able to probably depress the need for future rate increases because you're more efficient with the programs that you have, so.
And I can certainly appreciate that, but in the long run, it's gonna save the people that have accurate meters money.
Right.
Or at least keep their inflation depressed, right, I mean, but.
Yeah.
However.
However, you still like a high-low number.
A, a low number, yeah, give me, give me some sense here.
When Lenny was here, I believe he had estimated thirty hours was being spent with his folks out taking a meter reading. And so while I understand it's not going to reduce our man-hours per se, it certainly does free up our staff that they could be spending their time on more valuable projects.
And, uh, well, fortunately or unfortunately, these meters don't allow remote disconnect. So part of what the meters, meter readers will have to continue to do is to go out and.
Oh, really?
And do the disconnection for, for those that aren't paying. But you are correct that the thirty hours would drop significantly.
And we come back to our top priorities as a town, public safety, water, and sewer. Those are top of them, they're top of the list, and everything else falls in place on.
Well, if.
I do wanna, uh, authorize a lot of these things.
No, no, of course, why don't you mean, I don't understand what you mean.
I wanna pay, spend some of the money for the other things tonight. I'd love for them to go ahead and get the, the vac truck started, not wait for another month.
Well.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
If it's okay, I would make a motion based on this conversation, that we fund all the. the items listed, ex- excluding the remote water meter, that we'll have a conversation in a month, and we'll go ahead and include in the, uh, AR, American Rescue Plan funding, the West Slough Lift Station to get that going, and the, uh, Public Works Vacuum Truck, uh, and the other items that are listed, and I make a motion that down-staff move forward with that, uh, as soon as possible.
Second.
Discussion.
Steve, will you be able to get the numbers back, um, to Joey's request on that water meter, like a high-low, on what that savings might look like?
We will work on, on some.
Something.
Some, I, I, we do wanna get all of that for you, it's just, I haven't had time and, and haven't had time to get together with staff, unfortunately, but we, we do have, we do wanna get that for you, it's just.
Well, we have some time, fortunately, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. Give a second, definitely a second, okay. Any more discussion?
I'll just say that we'll, you know, we'll continue the conversation on the ARP and kinda like we did last time, but maybe January's work session and have Mr. Cook and our Parks and Rec, and we'll go down there and, and other folks who could be interested, uh, nonprofits and we'll, we'll continue that conversation in, in January, uh, work session.
Anybody else? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Hickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Scherer?
Yes.
Mr. Botkin, you have anything for us?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the council, have any comments? Um, I don't, look forward to seeing everybody at the parade tomorrow evening, except for Councilman Pettit, he'll be, uh, doing his own thing. Yeah, he won't be with us, though. Audrey, you wanna mention your fundraiser this, with Saturday, isn't it, the, uh?
Oh.
Don't you. Wait, you want me to talk about it?
We're doing a fundraiser on a Saturday for the, the Andrew Jackson, uh, School Museum, which is a portion of, uh, the Recreation Center and Living Legacy, and, uh, we thought it would be an awesome idea to be able to incorporate, uh, the town in it and the local shops and entities. So, uh, Cookies for Calls will literally, uh, have people going to different, um, shops, different stores in town to purchase and, uh, to be able to view, and once they get, uh, their collective effort, they'll meet back at the Recreation Centers. That'll be on, uh, Saturday, and if you look on our Facebook page and our website, it will have all of the information about it. So thank you guys so much for everything that y'all have done to support us and, and what you continue to do.
Thank you.
Working with our tickets, Jack?
They're twenty, the tickets are twenty dollars. And you might have to look at their website because I'm not sure about that. I read it this morning, but I don't.
It's twenty.
The tickets are twenty, yes.
Tickets are twenty. Curated is one place you can go, you can go to, uh, shops.
Nessun Hove.
Is it Virginia Gift?
Virginia Gifts, oh, yeah. Studio thirty-one thirteen is one of them.
Okay, okay.
That's all that I think I saw today, those three.
Don't they cooperate out where the old Southern States or the, the, the.
Hawksville Trading Company.
Hawksville Trading, yeah.
Oh, it is Sunday.
Appalachian Trail, Alpharetta, uh, Orblair House.
It is Sunday, yeah, it's Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday the nineteenth, Hawksville, uh, Murray, Hawksville Trading Company.
That one's right now.
Natty Hines, Shannon Door Moon.
Got a lot going on on this, Audrey, yeah, got a lot going on.
All right, thank you. Uh, again, we're gonna cl- uh, go into closed session there in a minute, so this might be the council and my last opportunity to wish all of you a Merry Christmas. Now, we're gonna, I think, sing here shortly, and you may not wanna listen to the whole part of that. But anyway, thank y'all for being here. Again, you're welcome to stay, we'll go back into open session, uh, a little bit later on this evening, but again, Merry Christmas to all of you, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
And I did mean to thank Parks and Recs because Jen's absent, Morgan and the guys stepped in big time on Friday for the tree lighting, and I think downtown looks beautiful.
I know, there's some, I got a, a comment about the, the packages that are wrapped and on the, the different poles and all, and it just looks really, the whole town.
I was down at Creek's, I was at his disposal, and I found, and it was someone calling and going, Mr. Jobs, and I said, whatever it takes to get the job done.
Thank you, sorry about that, thank you, Jackie.
Is that your jacket?
I remembered it when I walked up.
Turn this off right here.
Is he still doing the remodeling project there, y'all talking town?
I threw that off.
No, I was, I was.
Oh, yeah, we need a motion to go, and y'all wanna take a quick break first, is anybody okay?
Yeah, I want to.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion to go in?
Well, we can take a quick break, I think, Joey.
Okay, take a break first.
Mr. Hickers needs a break, yeah, go ahead, we'll go. Yeah, go ahead.
We ain't going to closed session yet.
Well, no, we'll wait till you get back.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.